All right, Madam Mayor, it's 5:30. If you'd like to go ahead and get started, I'll lay out the parameters by how we're going to run the meeting.
Okay, we are ready.
Just so everyone is aware, I'm Andrew Potter. I function as Human Resource Manager for the City of Seala, along with many other tasks as assigned. The mayor has asked that I more or less moderate the meeting and respond to the written question and answers. For the duration of the meeting, which will be an hour and a half, we intend to proceed until seven o'clock. We will take public comment from any attendee who is present who would like to make public comment. You will need to have your name, first and last name, written as your name before being called upon. You'll need to use the raise hand function within the Zoom application, or if you were on a phone call, you can press star nine to raise your hand. We will restrict each speaker to three minutes, so we would appreciate it if you would be courteous to the time constraints. There are currently eighty-eight citizens participating, and we can't get through them all if people take any longer. There's also some guidelines we'd like to remind you of, that if anyone wishing to speak shall maintain appropriate civility. So comments that are vulgar, meaning use crude language, degrading, derogatory, or slanderous in nature, shall not be permitted. You are welcome, obviously, to speak however you'd like. However, if it is vulgar, degrading, derogatory, or slanderous, you will be muted and subsequently removed from the meeting. With that, Madam Mayor, if you want to go ahead and say anything before we call upon our first speaker?
No, just welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. It's a great way to to get our voices heard out there.
I would add, this meeting is being recorded. It will be uploaded tomorrow as soon as possible to our YouTube channel. We were attempting to stream live via YouTube. However, there are some privacy settings that are in the City of Seala's Google account, which did not allow us to do that tonight. So we will fix that for future meetings. And hopefully, if you weren't able to attend, or your friends weren't able to attend, you can send them to that recording tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. So we're just gonna get started here. I see Dwayne Castles. You've had your hand up for some time now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My wife and I moved to Seala from Yakima two years ago, partly because of the growing crime that we saw in Yakima. And Seala had a reputation as a law and order town, and we've been quite happy with our move. I've never had reason to attend a city council meeting in any city which I've resided, but recent issues have compelled me today. We're living in a council culture, society, where it's easy for people to clack away on their keyboards and rile up activists from across the country to damage the reputations and careers of people they do not agree with with slanderous statements about one's past with no fear of retribution. First of all, one of Don Wayman's comments, it seems to be provoking this ire that Black Lives Matter organization is a neo-Marxist organization, is in fact true. Black Lives Matter founder Patrice Cullors says in a video from 2015 that the group has underlying ideology saying, "We are trained Marxists." As COVID accelerates this trend of moving out of big cities, Seala will see more and more people from Seattle relocate here in search of a better life. However, as often is the case, they tend to replicate the world from which they came. It will take leadership exemplified by Don and the mayor to keep Seala the community it is today. Feel free to venture to Seattle or Portland to see the alternative. We were recently over there, and it's appalling. My wife and I have had the privilege to get to know Don, and rather than condemn him, Seala should be thanking him first and foremost for his service to this country, and secondly, for his service to the people of Seala. Our lack of leadership in government across this country is no doubt due to good people not wanting to put up with abuse such as this that goes beyond the pale in the character assassination. For those of you who disagree with Don, fine, voice your opinion in a respectful manner. I would just encourage the council, those who that support Don, to not balk at your support and do not be such timid souls as to bow to online pressure from the Twitter crowd and not to condemn a man of Don's caliber. Don, if you're on this call, which I assume you are, you have our full support, and I know many people that we know in Seala also support you, and I want to apologize on our behalf and their behalf for what you're being put through. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Kayla Lally. Kayla, are you there?
Madam Mayor, she's there. If you'll give me a second to change her functions, can you move to the next speaker, and then we'll come back to Kayla?
Sure. Amanda Watson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Seala's sexual assault, domestic abuse, and rape rates have been steadily on the rise since 2016, with one such case ending in the tragic murder of Emily Harris. How can Seala citizens encourage our girls to speak up about mistreatment and abuse with a city administrator that's been accused of sexual assault of a child and a mayor that doesn't believe women who do speak up?
Well, first of all, I'd like to speak for myself. I do believe women who speak up, and I'm... When it comes to domestic violence, I will be the first to stand for for a woman or a man who is having to deal with any domestic violence.
So just to clarify, then, you do believe the woman who accused Don Wayman of sexually assaulting him when he was a JROTC instructor?
That is not what I said. I said, when it comes to domestic violence, I will stand behind any man or woman who is having to deal with domestic violence, with them, with their family. And as far as the other question you have, I'm gonna let Rob answer that.
Amanda, can you hear me?
I can.
So you represented that rape rates are on the rise in Seala. What rates are you comparing? What dates?
From 2016 to 2017.
And what figures do you have for those two years?
I don't have it in front of me. It was just research that I did from the government website. Thirty-one percent overall crime rate, and with the bulk of that being rape, assault against women, and domestic abuse reports.
So your question is, how can the mayor properly deal with crime, given that an allegation eight years ago was made against?
I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. My question is, how, as a city, do we propose to teach our girls to be confident to speak up about assault, abuse, and domestic violence when our leadership has purported to not believe those same girls that have spoken up about abusive leadership in the past?
What girls?
I'm not sure if you're familiar with a case from Granbury, Texas, where...
I am, and it does not involve multiple girls.
Okay, there are girls in this city that do have those types of issues that we need to protect them, right?
Sure.
This is a question about how we prepare women and how we make them confident to speak up to leaders when our leadership in Seala has a city administrator who pled no contest to assault of a young student that he was supposed to care for, and a mayor who hired him knowing that, and a mayor who doesn't speak up for that same woman and says that she does not believe those accounts.
We would encourage our citizens, no different than any other citizens from any other city.
And can you go further into detail on that?
Amanda, thank you for your question. Rob, if you'd like to respond, that's fine. Your time is concluded.
I don't believe any further details necessary. You're suggesting that somehow the city management would not care about crimes occurring in our city, and I can tell you that's just fundamentally false.
Kayla, are you available?
I am.
Sorry, apparently, if you use an older version of Zoom, you can't speak as an attendee. Go ahead.
Okay. With Seala being a predominantly white city, I think a lot of our citizens are insulated from racism that happens here. But as the mother of two black boys, I have had a lot of concerns about keeping my children here in this city after a lot of the things I've seen and heard from our leadership. So my question is, what young person, most of whom overwhelmingly believe that black lives are worth protecting and needs special attention now, would want to start their career and family here? What young family would want to move here? It seems like the city administrator has cost us one of the most precious things that we have as a town, which is our reputation as a nice place to raise a family. Would you agree or disagree with that? And do you feel that people of color would feel safe living here?
Well, I... Let's go with your first question. The city administrator's comments are his personal beliefs. And and they were they were spoken when he was asked a question on what he what he thought of what was going on. And social media took that, or social media got a hold of it, and the papers got a hold of it. And they made some statements that were untrue. But of course, it is social media and the newspaper, and everybody believes that what they say is the truth.
Don Wayman was confronted about his statements and continued to to back them. And he stands behind what he said. You stand behind what he said. And several of the council members, as far as I understand, stand behind what he said. And it's that that troubles me, is that he said that, and then, you know, I have to live with my black children in this city surrounded by people...
Okay, we're losing part of your comments.
You're breaking up a little bit. Can you repeat that last sentence?
Who think that... Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's working a little better now.
Okay. I have to live surrounded by people who think that I, as a as a public school teacher in our district, you know, and the mother of black children, that I am somehow a bad person and, you know, devoid of intellect and reason because I stand up and say Black Lives Matter.
Well, we're not saying black lives don't matter.
Things are being reported to the media, and I feel that they're being reported accurately. But you are...
Go ahead. You're breaking up. We're only getting parts of what you're saying.
If you're curious about the mayor's perspective in regards to Black Lives Matter, I would direct you to the most recent proclamation she issued.
I think that I am curious about what you think. Do you think that a family of color, at this point, would feel comfortable moving to this town?
Absolutely.
And I agree. I totally agree. We are still the town we were six months ago.
We are still the town that we were. Unfortunately, some racist ideas are being uncovered, and they are being supported by our leadership.
That's a subjective characterization that Mr. Wayman made any comment that was racist, but I can tell you, the city has no racist policies and will have...
Was his comment anti-racist?
Well, you're shifting topic there. I'm not asking you to agree or to even be pleased by Mr. Wayman's personal views. I can tell you that the mayor and I have control over his city policy. There will be no policy that discriminates against people of color or people of any type. It's just that we've never had one, and we won't have one.
I would encourage you to ask people of color how they feel about living here.
Mayor and I have met with some people of color that have asked to meet with us, and we've had those discussions. You sound like a good mother with good kids. We hope your kids are happy, and, you know, Seala's a great place.
Madam Mayor, Kayla's time ran out, so if you'd like to call in the next citizen, go ahead.
Thank you. Boy, Lindsay Jakulich. I'm probably pronouncing your name wrong.
So I'm gonna start off this... I'm sorry, I'm on my wife's Zoom on her iPex. I don't have Zoom. My name is Jesse Jakulich.
My name is James Hosey.
Do we start now?
Okay, go ahead.
I would first like to start off by thanking Mrs. Raymond and Mr. Case and the Seala City Council for taking the time to listen to the issues that concern myself, my brother, and the community we live in. As African-Americans, my brother James Hosey and I, Jesse Jakulich, and the people of Seala find certain things in this community to be confusing, unfair, and wrong on many levels. In the community, as of late, Black Lives Matter has become a very big issue. Chalk has become a very big issue. Neither one of these is something that should impact a small town like Seala the way it has. We, as a community, need to approach this matter thinking about everyone involved and the way it impacts our daily lives and the way we feel about living in Seala. Instead of turning against Black Lives Matter movement and considering everyone involved in the movement devoid of intellect and reason, we, as a community, should be trying to figure out how to embrace, help, and show support for the people of color and the injustices that are happening. An honest human reaction would be great to see instead of turning it into a political war. We are addressing this issue publicly, not to shame the community we live in, but to raise awareness that everything we say and do is being held to a higher standard with the rise of social media. It is very important that we, as a community, realize that change is here, and we should try our best to adapt. We, as a community, understand that defacing public property will not be tolerated. On the contrary, chalk being easily erased, washed away, blown away, and used by kids and adults all over the world as artwork and freedom to express themselves has never caused an issue until now. For many years, Yakima has done the chalk bomb. During these years, it has created growth in the community, gave people a chance to express themselves, and proved to be something helpful and creative for Yakima. During the chalk bomb, inspirational quotes, support of LGBT, murals, and other amazing artwork are displayed. This has also made families come together that don't know each other and allow them to laugh, smile, and show love to one another through artwork. Chalk drawings in Seala can do exactly what the chalk bomb did for Yakima if it's approached the right way. If you take a look at the people creating chalk artwork in Seala, they are smiling, laughing, embracing, and coming together as a community.
Since the artwork has become a big thing in Seala, it's shown that all races could come together and show love and support. While most artwork has been tailored towards the Black Lives movement and the equality of all races, it has also brought the community together in a giant way. If you look at the artwork created by Black Lives Matter in the quality of the artwork, the majority of the artists are Caucasian, which clearly shows the progress in the small town like Seala. Trying to make it illegal to create a certain design of artwork that's obviously not hateful and used to create equality has really shown the true colors of certain Seala residents and the thinking behind it. It is not a time to shy away from movements and support equality. This is the time to embrace it and change with it. As a community, we all need to come together and show the importance of chalk drawings and the Black Lives Matter movement. This is our community. Let's show the love and support this community has and show it to the rest of the world. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on, Charlotte Town.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. I appreciate that a lot. So my question is, is that, you know, we we look at a lot of the conversation that's being generated around a lot of these issues, and a lot of the things that I'm hearing, especially from Rob, is that, you know, that the City of Seala is not engaging in any sort of like discriminatory or racist policies and that, you know, Donald Wayman's comments were his and his alone, and that, you know, he has the right to that, which I agree, absolutely, we have the right to free speech. However, I would like to know how the city justifies then carrying that out and turning that into policy, which we can clearly see. As you know, during the COVID-19 pandemic, the masking mandate is actually a law, whereas the issue surrounding chalk around this city is a little bit murkier, to the point where the city is actually trying to clarify the law, right? So my question is, is how do you justify, you know, attacking one issue and not the other to the point where you are actually pressure washing art with kids still sitting on them? Which, you know, that's which, by the way, is extremely dangerous to operate a pressure washer around teenagers, yet, you know, nothing on the masks whatsoever. I find it hard to believe that the city is being governed by the rule of law and not an ideologically driven administration. And I'd like to know how you intend to correct that.
Rob, would you like to answer the chalk laws that we have, the graffiti laws that have been in the books forever?
Sure.
I would like to hear from you, not Rob. I would like to hear from you.
Well, as far as the city is concerned, any writing on public property is prohibited. People can write on their own driveways, on their put signs in their yards, but anything on public property is prohibited. We don't go searching for it. You will see, and I have been in the car with Mr. Wayman, and he will go out and clean graffiti off a sign. When we see it, we clean it.
Okay, so then, okay, if that's your policy, then how do you then justify ignoring the mask mandate, which is also law? Because it seems pretty clear to me, and and according to Mr. Wayman's statements that he made at a recent rally for, I believe it was Lauren Kulp, the governor candidate, that he's not going to enforce that mandate. He actually said that. So again, how do you justify this? How do you square up the fact that this is, you know, clearly being ideologically driven and not being handled as the rule of law?
My proclamation says that we will not force our police department to enforce those laws from the governor. Is is am I understanding you right as your question?
My question is, how do you justify picking and choosing which laws you're going to enforce and then trying to claim that this is not ideologically driven?
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure how to answer that. I think that... Pardon me?
I said, I know.
You know what?
Oh, I have no doubt that you don't know how to answer that.
I don't know how to answer that. I think that I think you're talking about apples and oranges here.
I'm talking about the law, ma'am.
You're talking about the law of wearing a mask.
I'm talking about that. You seem to say that there are two different laws here that you're... One is that you're selectively enforcing to the point where you are pressure washing the streets while people are still sitting there, and the other, you're completely ignoring.
We are not ignoring it, that we have a lot of citizens who wear them. That is their that is their personal choice.
It is a personal choice, though, ma'am. It's the law.
It has... That is a... Yeah, I would answer that for you. That is the governor's law that was put out there.
Sir, I can tell you with regard to the governor's proclamation...
Not sir, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, ma'am, I can tell you with regard to the governor's proclamations in regard to the Wuhan virus that the mayor's position is articulated in a proclamation. That proclamation was backed by a unanimous vote to the city council. What that proclamation does is not declare the governor's proclamations null and void, but rather says the City of Seala will not put attention to trying to enforce it for the governor. By contrast, when you make comments about the chalk issue, your question has built into it a false premise. Your question presumes that the city is being selective and enforcing the chalk issue only against some and not others, and I can tell you that's factually incorrect.
Thank you, Rob.
Charlotte's time has ended. If you'd like to call in the next citizen.
Thank you. Daniel Callahan. Are you there, Daniel?
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, I have a prepared statement. I think most would agree that Seala is a pre-tyratic city. Many people here display their American flags and are proud to be American. As a result, our community also cares heavily about our constitution and the Bill of Rights attached to that constitution. However, the city has not been nearly as cautious with our civil rights as it should be. The local chalk issue has turned into a great debate about the First Amendment, and the city itself seems to be grossly uninformed when it comes to that aspect of the issue. I had the chance to talk with a police supervisor about chalk art in regards to the First Amendment, not just an officer, a supervisor, in a position of authority over other officers. He told me that the Supreme Court has just ruled that any sort of writing on government property is no longer considered free speech protected by the First Amendment anywhere in the country. This, as you may well know, is completely false. Writing on government property with chalk is allowed all over the country and only isn't protected free speech under two conditions. The city has banned such writing in municipal code, and they enforce it completely equally regardless of content. When questioned on the accuracy of a statement, the officer responded that it was above his pay grade to know the law and have read the Supreme Court case where this was decided. According to his own words, one man, the city attorney, had given out the order that chalk on government property was not protected speech, and he was to enforce it. He said the order was given that day. Doesn't it sound like there's something wrong with that? One unelected man gave out an order, and our S.R.P.D. felt comfortable enough and justified enough to send out a supervisor to enforce this order. On top of all this, certain city council members have admitted that municipal code is ambiguous when it comes to whether chalk is graffiti or not. Yet our city has been enforcing it as if it were clearly graffiti. It would seem much more prudent and responsible to wait to enforce any of this until a code was explicit on whether chalk is graffiti. This approach would err on the side of civil rights to make sure nobody's freedoms of speech was infringed upon. Instead, our city has chosen to err on the side of unjustified authority disregarding our beloved constitution. In a city as patriotic as this, it would be disheartening to many to know that their city doesn't care about their freedoms as Americans, especially when their city administrator doesn't believe in the First Amendment, saying, "We don't believe city property is the appropriate place for expressing your political speech." My question is this: What is the city going to change to make sure they aren't trampling on our most beloved American values? And do you think the city is doing a satisfactory job when knowing what laws a supervisor is enforcing is above his pay grade and blindly following orders is acceptable?
Well, Rob, I'm gonna let you go to the law part of it.
There's a lot packaged into that comment preceding the question. What people need to understand, and what I've tried to make plain for months now, but it seems some people either can't understand it or don't want to, is as it comes to chalk, there are two different parts of the law. There's the anti-graffiti portion of the Seala municipal code that, at most, as presently written, can lead to a civil fine, money, no jail time, not a crime. There's a second part of the law, however. The Seala municipal code adopts, among other things, the statewide statute for malicious mischief in the third degree. Thus, and that applies to any writing, drawing, or painting on public property without permission. Chalk is not excluded from the coverage of that section. Thus, as I explained to you when we met with you and others, Mr. Callahan, it's effectively to have a fifty cent understanding to a dollar's worth of a question to focus solely on the anti-graffiti portion of the code, as though the malicious mischief section of the code does not apply. Now, having said that, the real question, fundamental practical question, is where might someone want to use traditional chalks? And I can tell you, the city's policy at present, and if this changes for enforcement priorities, we will give notice, but the city's policy at present is to not criminalize nor even seek civil penalties. but the city's policy at present is to not criminalize nor even seek civil penalties against people who want to use traditional chalk on sidewalks. We will still clean it up as fast as we find it. By contrast, those who want to use spray chalk or want to draw on buildings or want to use traditional chalk on streets will seek prosecution and civil penalties. It's not a question of the city changing something. Existing law already provides for that.
Would you like to address the parts of my comments where I said that a city supervisor, I mean, a police department supervisor said according to you that any writing on government property is never free speech anywhere in the country? Would you like to address that?
I don't know what.
Why would he say that you said that? And a man in a position of authority over our police department, no less.
Daniel's time has concluded.
I'll address it. I don't know what supervisor you're referring to. I don't believe I've had any conversations with supervisors. If you're talking about public works folks or even police department people, I mean, the only people I've been speaking to at city in regard to this would be the mayor, the administrator, and some other office type folks. I mean, I've had conversations with Andrew about it, for example. But the question, the First Amendment does not give anyone a right to deface public property. That's just a plain reality.
All right, thank you, Rob. Thank you, Daniel. Dan Peters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this opportunity. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Speaking tonight to offer my input as a longtime citizen of Seela, a parent and an active member of the community. First, I'd like to say our city leadership has unfortunately divided the city, and it didn't have to happen. Like many municipalities, the city would be back to fighting about masks or no masks if the city administrator had stayed out of this situation. Or even better, if the city had issued a proclamation supporting the rights of all citizens. Instead, because of name-calling and selective enforcement of the laws, the forces of division are being fed more and more fuel. But maybe this will end up being an opportunity to look at something that has been denied, the impact of racism in our country. Like, we see that Coach Duke, Duke Coach Mike Sheshevsky recently said, "And what do we do when we see it, this racism? We turn the other way, and no problem is solved unless we acknowledge the problem. If you acknowledge it, you have a duty to solve it. We, as a country, have a duty to solve this problem," he said. So my question is, does the city have a plan for how to deal with this division? What can we do to bring people together? In my opinion, it's going to take work and compromise and time. My modest suggestions are an independent facilitator and/or trainer for the council and administration team in Seela with the goal of writing a strategic plan for diversity and equity, a public document that is followed up on. Establish and listen to focus groups of stakeholders, including activists, the schools and business, clergy, the Seela Downtown Association, police, coaches, students, and city officials to address issues of race, diversity, inclusion, and equity in our city. After listening, develop policies to address and codify these for future leadership and elected officials to follow. For citizens of Seela, if you are in a leadership position in this town and you've been hesitant to speak, please write to our city administration and express your opinion. Also, for citizens of this town, talk face to face, at a distance, of course, with your friends and neighbors, including those you disagree with. As our church's minister recently said, "Lead with love and not with lessons," and pray for our town. Our city administrator has given the city an unfair reputation as being hostile to people of color. I'm really worried that this is the way Seela is now seen. Most of the world sees Black Lives Movement as not about some organization that shares the same name. It's been a sudden shift, to be sure, but cities, companies, sports leagues, civic organizations, and citizens all over have shown that they are marching for an idea. Coach K added to his comments by saying, "Black lives matter." "We should be saying it every day. It's not political. It's not a political statement. It's a human rights statement," he said. Yesterday, Major League Baseball, America's pastime, said, "Supporting human rights is not political." And just today, the Kitatah Sheriff's Department issued a statement that read in part, "The claim that black lives matter is obviously true. Of course they do. These men and women are not illogical left-wing agitators. They have come out strongly not because of communism, but because they believe in equality and aren't seeing it. While the city I grew up in wasn't very diverse, I know most of you have friends who are people of color. I do too. I feel a sense of responsibility to speak up for those friends and for our kids' futures. I want to say hate has no home in Seela, but based on the comments of the city administrator and the actions taken by the city, it's not an easy case to make. As someone who cares about this town, this hurts me." One of the lowest points in this controversy came early on, more than a month ago. A 2020 graduate from Seela High School, an athlete and leader in her school and friend to many, known for her keen wit and gritty approach, wrote on social media in response to the original march that she had grown up in Seela and as a Native American saw racism as being a common problem in our town. The response she received from another Seela resident, "Leave." That has really stuck with me. I'm in this for her. We all should be. I want her to stay and help us. If she does go away, I hope she comes back. We don't need her to leave. We need her to lead. If I look at all these factors and missteps, again, as a longtime citizen, parent, and active community member, I think the best thing would be to let the current city administrator go. We need a fresh start. We really need the city council to take a brave step to get us going in the right direction again. Seela deserves better. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dan. Carl Torkelson.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna have more of a statement than questions. I, first of all, would like to thank and commend Sheri Raymond and Don Wayman for the outstanding job they've been doing for the last four and a half years. I truly appreciate Sheri and Don's hard work on things like the Fall Festival, the Fourth of July Celebration, building Volunteer Park, hiring a full-time code enforcement officer, lowering city insurance rates to a tune of $150,000 a year simply by just having good policies and good leadership. And that's just to mention a few of the many improvements which we've actually been able to do along with city staff and others as well. Bringing these points to light for the fact that I feel there's a lynch mob out there that just seems to see the, the negative and make negative out of a bunch of things that really we should not put a lot of value into. I'd also like to say that Don Wayman is a good, honorable, fair man. He's not a racist. He's always used code and the law for his decisions in Seela and been fair to all. Calling people neo-Marxists while they participate in the Black Lives Matter movement is not a racist slur. The Black Lives Matters founders say they are trained Marxists to echo one of the other speakers from before. It's also my opinion that people upset with Sheri and Don for the removal of chalk art graffiti need to understand Seela's ordinance and how the law pertains to it. We've gone over a bunch of this already, so I won't get very deep into it. It's basically a gross misdemeanor in the third degree drawn in public streets and property. We, we've said that. Rob said that a bunch of times. So thank you, Sheri and Don, for upholding the law in Seela, even though it wasn't the easiest thing to do. A lot of controversy with it. Lastly, I think Councilwoman Vargas and Councilman Carlson need to use fact, findings, ordinance, and law for their decisions instead of their own opinions and their emotions. Maybe they could rely on our highly qualified city attorney as we see what he's doing tonight and the great job he's doing to guide them instead of arguing with them and ignoring his counsel. I think if I was to say one thing, I see a lot of the council trying to sidestep the law and ignore it, trying to make things out of certain aspects that aren't there, and basically being timid to echo another speaker from tonight. They need to be stronger. They need to rely on the law. They need to rely on our city attorney. And if they can't do so, maybe as a town, we need to look for stronger council members at the next election. I feel the fact that, in my opinion only, Seela's forming a lynch mob on factors that aren't really there. Don Wayman's upholding the law, so is Sheri. It's been happening this way for a long time. I've been in Seela for almost 30 years now. And my wife and myself, and it's always been the case where if something's on the street, it gets cleaned up. I, I feel bad for people that are new to the town and they, they find this to be the case, but it's what we do. And they're gonna keep doing it till we can change the ordinance or the law. So in conclusion, just thank you for listening to me. And Don, Sheri, keep up the good work. I really appreciate what you do, my family and I do, and there's many others as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan.
There are two Mr. Callahens. I assume you're speaking to this one?
I am.
Awesome. Hey, first off, Sheri, I really want to thank you for having this meeting and being willing to have it recorded for posterity because America is watching, as we both know. And this is gonna be loaded on the internet so that everybody can see exactly what Seela City stands is about these issues that have arisen. As you also know, when you fired me from Parks Board, the letter that you sent me said it was due to my Facebook comments, which I made on my own time off of Parks Board when I was not being paid even when I was there in attendance. Believe it or not, Sheri, you set precedence then that our quote, "Free speech" can have job implications for anyone that works for or is volunteering for the city of Seela. So I know that my termination letter specifically cites my personal comments on my personal Facebook, and I'd be happy to send you a copy because I still have it in case you have forgotten. But we both know now that that's proof enough that you're keeping Don Wayman around, not because of free speech, but because of some other agenda. Don is on video saying hateful things about Jose Roja, local citizens who work at Department of Health, and local citizens that believe black lives matter, calling them devoid of intellect and reason. My question to you, is there some person or some group that's off limits to him, or is everyone fair game?
Well, let's go back to your comment that I tried to fire you from your position.
You did fire me for my position. I've got the letter.
Um, if I remember correctly, and I don't really want to get into this with you, but the council decided to not remove you from your appointed position. I tried to remove you.
Correct. I have the letter that says that I was terminated and thank you for my service. But as I said, you might have forgotten, so I'd be happy to send you a copy via email to remind you.
No, I remember it clearly.
Oh, so you remember sending me a letter firing me?
I, I remember sending you the letter that.
There we go, good.
But, but it didn't say you were fired, Bill.
Yes, it does, but I'll send you a copy so that you can be reminded.
And it said fired?
Correct. Terminated.
Terminated.
Correct, which is the same thing. It's just a bigger word for no longer serving in that role.
We are wasting your three minutes, Bill. Um, so your next question was?
There was only one question. The question is, is everyone fair game for his hate speech or is, are some people off limits?
Is everyone fair game? I don't, I, first of all, his, he doesn't send out.
Calling people devoid of intellect and reason, you're not, it's not cool to call people stupid, Sheri, especially not in a city council meeting that's now in the annals of Seela record for posterity.
Well, I I would have to go back to the conversation and, and the, the complete statement that was made. Did he call somebody out on it at that time?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
I would have.
On city council.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, it's been reported across the nation now with a copy of the video.
Well, Bill, there's a lot of things that are out there on video and in newspapers and.
Sheri, it's his lips moving on the city council meeting.
Thanks, Bill. Your time is up. Sheri, you're welcome to respond to him at your leisure.
Okay. Um, Bill, you, we probably should have, you and I have a sit down together on this and discuss it. Thank you. Um, Steve Weiss.
Hi, Sheri. Thank you for taking my, uh, my request to speak. I've chosen particularly to speak at this meeting for one reason, and that's to bring out some characteristics of Don Wayman.
Excuse me, Steve. Excuse me, Steve. Are you perhaps too close to a microphone? There's a lot of feedback. Can you? Try again?
Let me. Hold on just a minute.
It's a lot better right there.
Well, I'm in a house where they've got it on surround sound, sorry. So, uh, I've, I've chosen to be here just to defend Don Wayman. I know Don Sheri personally. I decided to come to build and be part of the Seela community. My wife and I, about six years ago, I'd known Don before he was even elected, or not elected, hired. Don is an amazing person. He watches over the Seela like no other city manager I've ever witnessed. If you want to find Don on any given afternoon, don't even bother looking in his office. Go to city, or city hall. Because Don's gonna be walking the streets of Seela. He walks about two miles every day in the afternoon, and in the morning, you'll find him most likely in his personal car driving the streets, just watching over the city. He broods over the city like he really cares. Don is thoughtful. Don's intelligent, articulate, well-studied. He's a no-nonsense leader that Seela is privileged to have. And I use the term no-nonsense because Don sees this job for what it is. He was hired to hold the laws of the city of Seela. As all abiding citizens know, laws do not have room for misinterpretation. And as a decorated military leader who spent most of his life defending freedom for this nation, Don knows the importance of rules. It shows, it's obvious that, excuse me, I'm trying to read. It should be obvious to all that many in this nation believe that they can pick and choose which laws they want to obey. The government leaders of the city think otherwise. And I believe that this town hall meeting is because a lot of people just don't like the rules and they're trying to forcibly change them. They're upset. They're angry. This nation was founded under an amazing constitution. The city of Seela lies beneath that constitution. Don probably knows the constitution better than anybody I've ever met. He uses words I've never even heard of. Guy's brilliant. He knows and studies, articulates government and law like I, you know, I'm just amazed by the man. And he was hired to maintain the order and institute the leadership that the people of Seela's expect. As far as Black Lives Matters goes, I've been on a line and I've read the manifestos. It is not a foundation. As a builder, I know the importance of a foundation, and a foundation of Black Lives Matter is not a good one. The people that founded it are, like we've said twice, I've heard twice now, they're trained Marxists. And if you really be closely into it, they want to unravel the entire American society. They want their society so badly that they're willing to unravel and take away from all the rest of us everything they have. Don simply was speaking to the population of Seela saying, "These people do not want this, this way. If you, if you don't like what's going on, boat, don't come and lay down and forcibly come into this town and try to change things by, by this, this risk." This far as chalk art.
Steve, Steve, thank you very much for your comments. Your time has expired.
Awesome. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Peter Dell.
Okay, I'm, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to do this. I appreciate it. I do have prepared statements, and I'm gonna stick with that, but there are sure lots of other things I'd like to say to the other speakers that have been denied. Yeah, anyway, I do not live in the city of Seela, but I feel that I'm part of the Seela community. We moved here to be part of the Seela School District for my two daughters, who were ready, about ready to start school. We were not disappointed. We pay taxes for parks, the swimming pool, soccer fields, the transit system, and of course, the school district. I've been involved in many community events, committees, and activities. I also attend church in Seela. I feel that I am part of this community. I'm very involved in political things and watch the politics of Seela and the school district very closely. So I have some comments about what is going on with Seela Mayor Sheri Raymond and Seela City Administrator Don Wayman. The mayor was elected easily by the citizens of Seela. She also has a solid footing in Seela as the owner of a popular business. Sheri as mayor has gotten Seela on very solid financial. Sheri as mayor has gotten Seela on very solid financial basis. Staff turnover is minimal. We have a wonderful police and fire departments, and most businesses are surviving during these crazy times. We can thank Sheri's leadership for being strong and making Seela the exception to many mismanaged cities in and around the rest of Washington. We are Seela Strong. Don Wayman is a Seela employee. He was hired by the previous mayor and works at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council. His job is to make sure that Seela, Seela stays within all of the rules, city, state, and federal, the cities function under. Not an easy task, whether you like regulation or not. He has done an incredible job of staff efficiency. All departments run very well, and the city of Seela is very well taken care of, both physically and financially. The previous administrator had the city in some serious trouble, and we survived all of that and are now in great shapes. Don's personal ethics, morals, and a strong work ethic, he, he, hard, hard worker always, have guaranteed our success. We right now have the most transparent city government that I can ever remember in my 25 years here. We have Sheri and Don both to thank for that. The Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of this land. No one is above the law. No elected official can make laws that supersede this law. The Constitution remains supreme. The First Amendment says, in part, that Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. It doesn't say only free speech after work. It doesn't say free speech only if you agree with me. It does however say free speech, just free speech. Don and Sheri have constitutional rights of free speech, just as I do, as I express myself right now. And as you do, when you choose to exercise that right. There are many calling for a limit on free speech, and there are some, of course. But you cannot, and I mean cannot, take away the right to free speech because you disagree with what somebody said.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Lopez, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. Um, first off, I'd just like to say thank you for taking the time and uh, please keep an open mind from perspectives that you may not hear um, daily. I'd like to remind everybody in this call that just because you are familiar with a headline or familiar with a stance that someone is saying, that does not mean full understanding or even just relatableness to the person or what they're saying. So I ask everybody to keep an open mind that some of the opinions that are not shared, just because they're unfamiliar, doesn't make them wrong. One of the things I would like to ask is, um, sorry, one second. I would like to know why um, it is a, why um, let's see, is having an attorney, I'm speaking about Rob Case in a sense, for a city full of um, certain viewpoints that is so plainly and like so plainly impartisan on his personal, personal social media pages. Um, is this your choice of a city employee to hire, even though it seems that a city employee seems to be leaning certain political viewpoint, political, political ways? And do you think that this certain personal opinion of your appointed attorney for the city could have some negative ramifications on the city based on their personal viewpoints? And I would also like to know if you have considered opening up the city's attorney position to people outside of your personal choice?
Well, let me try and understand your question. Are you saying that Mr. Case's viewpoints are not what we should have for the city?
I'm saying it to my, it's my understanding that this, your choice of attorney seems personal. And if I am a resident of Seela, I would like to know how my own views are being supported by a city attorney? If the city's attorney is so outrightly leaning one way on the spectrum and their personal views?
Well, first of all, um, he, I have no personal relationship with Mr. Case. He applied for the job and he went through um, the process of, of um, being screened and talked to and interviewed by the council.
And in that, in that, in screening and interview, that includes thorough background checks and questions that probably void a city attorney of personal opinion in their work?
Yes, it does.
And would you say that this is held accountable for all city employees that you are hiring?
That the background checks and everything is that, yes, we, it is all legally done.
And when you say legally, it seems that you only have one city attorney that can understand these legal documents? Do you see that there might be some like, it might be skewed if you're only talking to one certain person about legality?
Well, Rob comes highly recommended as an attorney, and yes, he, his opinion, we value very much. He goes strictly by the law.
So it might, and it's personal that I think opinion and law are two different things. So are you saying you, you appreciate his opinion, or you appreciate the way he carries out the law?
I, I appreciate the way he carries out the law. His opinion has has no reflection on what the law is. He might have an opinion one way, and the law is what he upholds.
Madam Mayor, Sarah's time has concluded.
Andrew, I think a couple of clarifications are necessary. First, uh, I am not technically a city of Seela employee. I am retained on an independent contractor basis. The simpler way to think about it is not to think about my relate, uh, to just view the city as one of my clients. So I'm not technically an employee, just to clarify that. Secondly, I'm also not the sole attorney who does work for the city of Seela. Rather, there is a prosecutor who's effectively my deputy, that's Margita Dornay. And she's been with the city for a number of years, whereas I'm coming up on about a year. Thirdly, in regards to the mayor potentially only receiving input from one lawyer, that's factually untrue in regards to all these relevant current issues. Not only is there my myself and Ms. Dornay, as I've mentioned, but in certain scenarios, we've even sought outside, uh, I guess we'd call that third opinions rather than the second opinion. And finally, I want to clarify that I do not set any city policy. So if you disagree or don't like certain political opinions you believe I have or that you ascribe to me, uh, my political opinions do not become city policy. The mayor sets policy. The administrator carries it out, and I advise on it. So for example, if I'm staunchly pro-life or staunchly uh, pro-choice, uh, that's not a basis uh, in my understanding of the law for the mayor to decide to retain me or not retain me. One last point, and I think I've said finally earlier, but one last point. My contract specifies that I serve at the mayor's pleasure. I have no current severance of any nature. So um, this is not a situation where I am somehow effectively fighting and getting to keep my own job. Rather, I serve at the mayor's pleasure.
Thank you. Lisa Drainey.
Hi, I just have a quick comment to make. Uh, first of all, I was under the impression that this would be a town hall with some council members also answering questions, as that said in the document that was posted on the city of Seela website. Uh, we were also told that 300 participants would be allowed in, but um, I've seen that it has reached a maximum of 100 and more people cannot get in and make comments. Um, so I'm disappointed that we as a public were misled, and I hope that you will offer another town hall. Um, I also have an issue with the city council meeting being referred to as business meetings, because if they are indeed business meetings, then we as Seela citizens and voters are the board of directors and we deserve to have a say in these council meetings. Large cities such as San Francisco have allowed public comment during their council meetings. If they can figure out a way to make it work, then surely small-town Seela can do the same. If you will not allow public comment and you will not do another town hall, at the bare minimum, you should be answering all the emails that you receive. I have sent multiple emails to the mayor and all of the council and have only gotten replies from two council members. Regarding the chalk issue, a federal court in Orlando has already ruled that arresting an individual over chalk messages on public property is a violation of First Amendment rights. That case cost the city of Orlando $190,000 in legal fees. Given that Rob Case had a financial interest in seeing the case go to court, he will get paid whether or not the city thinks it has a valid argument. Let me be perfectly clear here. There is absolutely zero chance that the city of Seela will be able to win against the attorneys from Perkins Coie, who have also been consulting with professors from Gonzaga University. Speaking of the First Amendment, the only thing that the First Amendment guarantees is that a person will not be fined or arrested or otherwise punished by the government for their expression. It does not guarantee protection of one's job. We see all the time that people get rightly fired over making racist, or sexist, or disparaging, or homophobic comments. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll offer a clarification again. I do not have any sort of vested financial interest that if the city were to be sued.
Sir, I have seen your, your contract with the city, and I understand that you get paid a bit, a rate for certain services, and then you get paid extra for certain court cases.
Yeah. Prior to you interrupting, I was going to clarify that for you because you obviously misunderstand. If you actually read the contract, it specifies that there's an additional rate I'm paid for city-initiated litigation. That would be if the city is a plaintiff, not by contrast, if the city is a defendant. I'm not trying to initiate any litigation here. The last thing I'll say, and I don't want to debate and get into the weeds on the law, that the case you're referring to from Florida is highly distinguishable, given that the only code section at play there only prohibited advertising messages. And what the defendant actually had written is a message in support of the Occupy Wall Street. Not an advertising.
Uh, also though, the RCW that you are referring to is not distinguished that um, that uh, people cannot write on public property. It says buildings and structures. Structures, I assume, are monuments or um, you know, play equipment or things like that. There is a distinguishment between things that are built and just the sidewalk or the uh, the road. So the RCW that you are referring to doesn't actually say anything about chalking in the road.
It specifically addresses writing on public property if you read some, pardon me.
Madam Mayor, Lisa's time has come to a conclusion.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Prior to moving on, I would be happy to address some of her comments regarding the how we are operating this particular town hall, if that's appropriate.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so earlier this week, we made a decision to upgrade the subscription of our Zoom meeting to allow 300 participants to participate. Um, those often, as we've found, require um, setting meetings up after those specific settings have changed. And it seems to me that this particular meeting uh, would be the trial of whether it actually held 300. Um, but this meeting was established prior to those settings that changed. So in response, we are trying to accommodate as many public as we possibly can. And this meeting certainly will be held uh, and recorded and posted online. And I do not believe there was any printed material suggesting that the council would be here at this meeting to respond to comments, although there was a statement made at the last city council member at council meeting, which may have led some to assume that council would be present.
I'll also note that on my screen anyway, it does show attendees now at 101. So perhaps the.
I, it fluctuates, but uh, it currently is capped at 100.
Yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, Jose Rocha.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mr. Case. First off, I'd like to make it clear that these are strictly my opinions. These comments do not represent the protests of Black Lives Matter, Google Boys, or the citizens being compelled to join the revolution or free us from a tyrannical government. They do not represent the thoughts of others. I like to start off with a quote from Andrew Yang. There's a very popular notion out there that ideas change the world. That's wrong. People change the world. People making commitments and sacrifices and doing something about the forces that are tearing society apart. Who do we serve? Humanity or the market? We as Americans were born with the legacy of fighting against tyrannical governments. Governments should provide protection from the depredations of tyrannical public servants with evil intentions. Our constitution is sacred, but also flawed. Flawed because perversion and tyranny have infiltrated our government. People in government are capable of tyranny. We have seen it here in our small town. Collectively, the people of the United States of America are the owners of this soon-to-be great nation. Therefore, we the people are capable of demanding an end to sin, perversion, and tyranny in our government. When the people unite in solidarity, willing to make sacrifices in order to fight the people and institutions that have oppressed us all for far too long, anything is possible. Every human standing on stolen American soil has a right to have their voice heard and have their government respond accordingly. The people have the right to demand anything from their government. Furthermore, the demand for unity and equality and justice for all cannot be reached unless we the people fight to put an end to tyranny. We stand here together as one voice. Solidarity, love, equality, justice, respect, and putting humanity first is what we demand. We do not seek to push religion or dogma. Rather, we are people that have established morals and beliefs to put humanity first. We seek to press our local, community, fellow countrymen, government, and nation, and nation to do the same. Stand united and put humanity first. This vision of unity has now been undermined and attacked by tyrants in our government that are in pursuit of something evil and disgusting for the people they're supposed to serve. Tyranny is what happens when government stops putting humanity first. We are not a mob. We are virtuous people seeking an end to tyranny that has oppressed us all collectively as Americans. We the people have every right to protect ourselves from the hardships, cruelties, injustices, and racism our government knowingly subjects us all to daily. The second path towards solidarity that we want to avoid requires purification of all tyrants through revolution. This is where my current situation stands. My observation is that the city of Seela's current government is tyrannical. Protesters have been demanding nothing more than equality for all by exercising their First Amendment rights. They have not broken any laws or done anything that can be perceived as indoctrination. Everything that's happened is in natural order, some call a revolution. When we the people are ignored and subjected to tyranny, more people wake up and join us to fight injustice. For every protester's voice that purposely goes ignored by Seela's local government, 10 more join our ranks willing to fight to have their voice heard. The city's comments and actions since June 6, 2020 have gained the attention of Americans all over this country. This attention Seela is getting is because of the government leaders' radical outrage to peaceful protest. This has not only exposed their racism, but their tyranny. This has precipitated a very hateful and violent demand for protesters to stop exercising their First Amendment rights. These same leaders, along with agitators and their acolytes, are angrily and hatefully suppressing our constitutional rights. They're demanding we get over it and stop protesting for equality based on their own flawed assumptions and poorly informed positions and opinions. Protesters from all walks of life are standing together in solidarity, loudly demanding actions of equality, justice, to be taken by a local government and national government. There has been no rational discussion or effort shown by the city to put humanity first. That's all we're asking for, to put humanity first. However, there has been a demand for protesters to bow down to a set of beliefs that are illogical, devout of reason, bigoted, untrue, racist, unconstitutional, and tyrannical. Ideological enforcers in our government are now conducting, conducting a fascist campaign to destroy our city with tyranny, racism, hate, bigotry, misogyny, homophobia, transphobia, and the call to normalize sexual assault.
Thank you, Jose. Your time has concluded.
Intolerated by the city government that has been infiltrated with fascists and tyrants.
Jose's time has concluded.
Solidarity is essential.
Kate, at this time, Andrew, I, I have a question um, from Gary Donaldson that I'd like to address.
Go ahead.
And do you, uh, real quick, do you have any written um, question? And do you, real quick, do you have any written questions?
There's more than a dozen questions.
Okay, do you want to do you want to address some of those?
Go ahead with your comments from Mr. Donaldson first.
From Mr. Donaldson in Seela. In the last council meeting, 7/14/20, it was discussed that the tennis courts are going to be crack repaired and resurfaced all at one time. Is there a reason why they can't do half the tennis courts? Then the other half, so players still have a place to play? It's actually because of the availability of the contractor. We ran into this problem last summer, and I want to say maybe even the summer before, of getting a contractor in there to do the job. So it's just, it has to do with the timing of getting somebody in there to do it all at once. Your second question, Mr. Hinni stated that Goodlander Road was completed other than a few things like manhole covers needed to be grounded, etc., etc. Directly across from the high school, there are directly across from the high school where the new retaining walls were installed on the north side. Are they going to finish the top of the retaining walls off? There's no top cap and a makeshift wood fence. Will there be a cyclone fence put at the top of these, or what is the finished product? The contractor started today, we're putting up a cyclone fence all along that area. The other question he had, it was discussed in a prior council meeting, something about adding sidewalks to the East Natchez Avenue from Weathers to Rushmore. This is item number seven on the city's six-year transportation plan, 2021 to 2026, as the council approved on 6/9 of 2020. So you should check that council meeting on that. So it's just going to depend on how state funding is and where the priorities of projects lie. So that is something that we'll have to wait on. So I'm going to take another phone call and then, Andrew, if you want to bring a question up after that that somebody has sent in, so that we can at least let those voices be heard.
That's fine. We can take a few of those. Who would you like next?
Amanda Watson. Oh, let's see. I'm sorry.
Amanda has spoken previously.
Okay, Jean Bogus. Jean, are you there?
Did you ask for John Bogus?
Yes.
Yes, please proceed.
John, are you there? I see you're unmuted. Okay, Andrew, let's go to one of your questions and maybe she will come on in a few minutes.
Okay, let me open up this queue. There's a few I will just read, just so that they are on the record for you to consider. There are several questions that have been posed regarding Mr. Case's apparent conflict of interest in their opinion. And I don't know whether you want to address that at all. Several varieties of questions, but essentially summarizing, how is Mr. Case acting as Don's personal attorney and the city attorney not in conflict of interest?
I'm happy to address that. My work for Mr. Wayman on a private lawsuit has no connection to my work for the city. No conflict literally exists. However, prior to me being hired, both parties, Mr. Wayman and the city, signed a three-page written waiver of any potential conflict of interest. That document was signed and entered September 12 of 2019. It was done so at the direction and with the approval of the unanimous city council. My candidacy was considered and I was hired. So from the outset, both of my clients have consented in writing that they view no conflict existing, but if any theoretical conflict might exist that has been waived, such that I can continue my separate representation of Mr. Wayman on a lawsuit that has no connection to the city, while also continue representing the city. I have hundreds, if not thousands, of clients, many of which are direct competitors in business. And I will say that a lot of people, when they suggest a conflict of interest exists, simply do not understand what actually constitutes a conflict. I hope that clarifies it some, and the document's available if anyone wants a copy of it. There's no secrets here.
Thanks, Rob. Can I take a few more of these?
Sure.
One citizen stated that they'd like to make note that Mr. Case referred to COVID-19 virus as the Wuhan virus. In their personal opinion, they believe that in and of itself, that is an example of disrespectful choices in wording. Another citizen says that they don't have access to voice on their computer, but would like to make a statement in support of Mr. Wayman and the city's actions on graffiti. "I have been active with the," quote, "I have been active with the Seela Chamber of Commerce and work for a leading force who is building Seela Vista Homes off Goodlander. Don has always been professional and, from my personal observation, has been represented the city well. Unfortunately, a person who serves in this capacity, as Mr. Wayman does, will always draw dissensions from those who do not agree with him. A man's reputation is at stake here, and when accusations are made, they must be factual, not based on what the media says, who we all know twist truth often and/or do not quote in context verbatim. It is heartbreaking that race wars and race divisions are being coordinated around America. I can appreciate people who gather to protest without property damage. However, the bottom line is that all lives matter." There is another question or concern raised by a citizen that employees at City Hall have not been wearing masks for some time, despite the public being required to wear them. Would you like to respond to that, Madam Mayor?
I'm, you know, it's hard to it's hard to answer that. We, when the doors are locked and when somebody knocks on the door to come in, masks are worn. Whoever greets the person coming in, they have a mask on. The gals at the front, when they help people pay their bills up there, they are wearing masks. So I don't know what to tell that person about that. The other thing I can say is that in my place of business, we get calls daily or the health department will call and say that we're not wearing masks there. The employees that are waiting on the customers are wearing masks. So, I mean, we have those people that say those things and we have our masks, that we're wearing them.
And then there was several questions regarding a newspaper article. Apparently, you, Mayor, claimed that some of the facts, as they were presented by the newspaper, were not accurate. They wanted to know what paper, what article, and if the city intended to pursue legal action against them.
Against what was said?
What was written in the paper.
What was written in the paper? No, I guess we haven't even considered legal action. It is what sells the newspaper. It is the headlines that are put in there that make people make people think differently of what the actual wording said when it was said. There's one paper will write it and then another paper will get a hold of it and then they add their own spin on it. So there's a lot of untruths out there.
An additional question. My question is about how the employee code of conduct is being produced. Is this not something that should be created by the council and a legal document drafted by Rob Case versus Rob Case creating the document on his own?
Well, there's a lot of legality that goes into writing a code like this. We, it is a daily conversation at City Hall. We are working on it. It is a tough thing to do. It's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of laws that go into it, a lot of things that can be misconstrued by people. So it's, when it is written, when we do get that, to that point of finishing that, if we get to that point of finishing it, with the possibility that it is clear and nobody is going to sue us over what was said in it because they took it a different way, we'll let the public know.
There's quite a few other comments made by anonymous attendees. They can submit those questions anonymously. I don't know whether you want me to read some of those or go back to allow some more people to speak.
Well, we have 10 more minutes. Let's allow some more people to speak. Is Kate Preston available?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Earlier, you stated the newspaper made some untrue statements. Which comments were untrue? Which paper and which author? Because I'm sure a lot of us would like to fact-check and speak to the newspaper and see which side is correct.
Oh, you know what? I would have to go back and look at the paper. I cannot recall them right now off the top of my head.
Can you recall the newspaper?
Yakima Herald, New York Times.
So
Go ahead.
On record, I just want to make sure that your statement is the Yakima Herald and New York Times both made false statements about this incident.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Watson.
As a reminder, Amanda has spoken already.
Okay, thank you. Courtney Hernandez. Courtney, are you there? Courtney, you'll need to, there you go, unmute yourself.
She is unmuted.
Yeah.
This is just moving on.
Yep, move on. Diane Underwood.
Sorry, Diane. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, Diane.
Hi, Sherry. As you know, I've lived here all my life, September 29 of 1956. Shows you how old you and I are both. Gone to see the schools, lived here all my life. And I find that this is one of the sorriest times I've ever seen Seela. I love this town, as you have heard me say. I also named my dog Seela. I want to see some ways that you could improve this meeting. I would like to be able to see faces instead of reading a big black screen with my name on it. It would allow us to be able to watch and see people. I think it would be 100% improvement. I want to thank Dan Peters, if he's still on, for his input. It was pretty much what I would have liked to have said had I gotten to it first. I want to give my gratitude and appreciation to Suzanne Bogus, God bless her soul, and to Russ Carlson. These two have been the only ones to actually have any moral values or to speak out about things that are important to people. And I know that with Russ's religious background, that as a council member with him, he always sought to find the correct and right answer to everything. And I appreciated him a lot as a council member. I want to also state something that I do feel that there is some conflict of interest with Rob Peters, as you know, how I had brought that up when we were looking at hiring him. Anything, if it deals with Don Wayman, he should not be speaking for him, period. Even though he is the city administrator, I feel that as a resident of Seela, I would feel a little bit better if the city used another attorney for anything concerning Mr. Wayman. And then, one thing that seems to be kept swept under the rug and has not been mentioned here is the incident in Granbury. And I want to know, I was abused as a young teenager by a man, along with my cousin and my sister. And I want to know, why is this not even a consideration? I find it highly outrageous. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Diane.
I'd like to address a couple of those comments, Madam Mayor. First, I am not here today representing Mr. Wayman. The sole job I am doing presently is representing the municipal corporation of the city of Seela. Second, I'll note, in contrast to the comments that Ms. Underwood just made, in reality, on September 10, 2019, at the city council meeting, she was among the city council members that voted to confirm my appointment as the city attorney. Thirdly, I will give you an advisement, madam, that when you said you raised some comments in objection and when I was being considered, that seems to me to dovetail with some comments that you've written online and also a letter you've written online that run afoul of Seela Municipal Code, specifically Section 1.06.060 pertaining to executive sessions that says in relevant part, "All members of the city council, mayor, and city staff shall hold in confidence all discussions concerning issues in the executive session and shall not discuss them outside of executive session, except upon approval of the council. Violation of this section shall invoke disciplinary proceedings as set forth in this chapter." Of course, I was not a participant in any executive session when my candidacy was being considered. But as I said, I'm giving you an advisement to please, in the future, comply with that municipal code section that I've just recited.
Thank you, Rob. So it is now 6:57. We would like to conclude this at 7:00. I want to thank everybody for participating tonight. I appreciate your calls and thank you for all of your input and opinions. Watch the city website for the next upcoming town hall meeting. I'm sure that we will have at least one or two more. And then we are also in the process of allowing public comment for our next council meeting. Just so everybody that's still out there and is listening, we are in conversations with the school district and some of the the Black Lives Movement people about educating and doing some different meetings. It is all in the, it's just all in the works right now. There's a lot going on and these things don't happen overnight. So, you know, we are working on it. Everybody have a great evening and we will see you soon.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to make some clarifications for the public, if that's appropriate.
Sure. Sure.
There have been more than fluctuating around 100 people the entire meeting, demonstrating certainly that the community is interested in these topics and would like their voice to be heard. We are doing whatever we can to ensure that there's a larger participant allowance at the next meeting, that these meetings will be livestreamed. There have been over 40 questions posted on Q and A for which there is only one staff to respond to those while simultaneously administering this meeting. So we do appreciate all in attendance. There are still 12 people with their hand raised, which indicate to me that there are many people who'd still like to have their voice heard. We will select a time and hold another meeting when possible to allow them to have their voice heard. Would you agree with that sentiment?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
So we do apologize for anyone who didn't have an opportunity to speak. We've been trying to manage that as tightly as possible to allow as many people to participate. Please, please wait for the next meeting to occur or bring some of your comments to City Council meeting.
All right, thank you, Andrew, for clarifying. Thank you. Okay, everybody have a good evening and we will see you around town.